Alright. Alright, recording is on.
Alright, very good. I will call the meeting to order. This is the August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one. I'll start again. I think, um. Is that you, Jim, or is that Tommy?
It's me. The recording is recording.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Okay?
Good.
Alright, very good. I'll call the meeting to order. This is the August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. The first, uh, item on the agenda are the meeting minutes from August ten, twenty-twenty-one. Uh. Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis. Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you, Commissioner Corcoran. Um. I will, uh, abstain from, from this, um, uh, I wasn't at the last meeting. Um, and there's no old business that I needed to, uh, review, so, um, I'll just run this. Commissioner Levy?
I also need to abstain.
As do I.
Okay, so that means that, uh, Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Elliott, you will be sitting in on this, uh, motion?
At the last meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Elliott, uh, was at the last meeting. Commissioner Gordon was not.
Alright. Well, so that means that we have, uh, we do have a quorum then with those, uh, with Mr. Elliott, do we not?
Yes, sir. You would have five voting members.
Five voting members. Excellent. Alright, um. Anyone have any comments or edits to the minutes? Any questions? Yeah? Alright, very good. Uh, all those in favor say aye or raise your hand? Okay, those are the five voting members. Uh, and any, uh, opposed should be none. And then there are abstentions. That's, um, Wagner, uh, Mr. McGee, and Commissioner Berman, yes?
Correct.
Alright. Next item on our agenda is nine twenty-six Sasko Hill Road. The request of the Country Club of Fairfield for one hundred percent release of a one hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred forty-four dollar bond pertaining to special exception. It's in the triple A zone.
Move to approve.
Now, let's see. Mr. Went, uh, any, uh, commentary?
If, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went for the record, um, in October of, October twenty-ninth of twenty nineteen, the Country Club of Fairfield has granted a special exception to rebuild their clubhouse facility. Um, those bonded improvements have been completed. There was a memo that I should have attached to the staff comments with the agenda distribution that was sent today, uh, confirming that the engineering department is satisfied that all work has been completed and are recommending a hundred percent release of the bond.
Excellent. And I will recuse myself from, uh, this. Uh, and so turn it over to Commissioner Berman, uh, to run this, this item.
Very good. Do I have a motion on this item? Oh, Commissioner Francis, uh, move to approve. Uh, do I have a second? Uh, Commissioner Braun. Uh, Commissioner Francis, uh, your motion, uh, do you have, uh, commentary?
Based on the town engineers' notice that all work has been completed and in fact exceeded her request by support approving this.
Very good. And, and your motion is for a hundred percent release of the bond?
Yes.
Great. Um, and Commissioner Braun, any commentary?
I totally agree. Um, town engineer was pretty clear they went beyond what they even had to do. So, yes, I, I agree with that.
Very good. Um, and any other commissioners have any commentary on this item?
Before you call the vote, uh, Mr. Chairman, it would be Commissioner Gordon's, uh, turn to sit in place of Mr. Wagner on this matter.
Uh, very good. I neglected that. Commissioner Gordon, you are in the hot seat. Um, any commentary from any commissioners? Okay, uh, well, let's, uh, call this to a vote. Um, all in favor, raise your hand or otherwise dissent. Any opposed? Any abstentions? I know, uh, Commissioner, um, Chairman Wagner's abstention. Any other abstentions? Or the item passes unanimously? With one abstention.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, next item is new applications to recommend a public hearing. Um, the, we have one, uh, twenty-four oh-five Black Rock Turnpike, uh, special permit and special exception application of Shiraz Flattery for additions and renovations to convert existing service base to retail use and additional gas pump island in the design commercial district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went again for the record. This is the, there's an existing gas station on the corner of Black Rock Turnpike and Brookside Drive. Um, this proposal, the new owner is seeking to convert the garage base to retail use with a, a small addition and also, uh, add an additional gas pump. So it's both a special exception and a special permit and does require a public hearing.
Thanks. So the expansion of the convenience, uh, store into the auto repair, you know, replacing the auto repair base?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Um, can I have a motion on this? Commissioner Braun moves to approve to public hearing. Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Went before we go to a vote? Seeing none, all in favor say aye, raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let's move to public hearing unanimously. Next item is old business, fifty-five forty-fives Park Avenue. Zoning compliance application of Primrose Development LLC for a one hundred twenty unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes in the R three zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I just want to note before I begin my remarks, as noted on the agenda, uh, this would be the last regular meeting, uh, for which a decision must be rendered on this application. We have till the September the fourth. We don't have a meeting between now and then scheduled. Um, so hopefully we can, um, come to a conclusion this evening. So again, um, the subject parcel is a two point four acre parcel and is bounded, uh, as you know, by Park Avenue on the east and the Merritt Parkway on the north. The driveway for the proposed development is at a traffic light in opposite of, of the Merritt Parkway northbound entrance and exit ramp. The proposed development consists of a single building with one hundred and twenty residential units and one hundred and ninety parking spaces or one point five eight spaces per unit. The building consists of six stories above grade level parking, which is tiered stepping down along this sloping site. It slopes fairly dramatically from Park Avenue towards the rear of the site. The building height is approximately sixty-five feet on the Park Avenue frontage and eighty-eight feet, uh, at the rear of the site. The unit types consist of sixty-one bedroom units and sixty-two bedroom units. Uh, the proposed thirty-six below market rate units, uh, are comprised of twenty-two bedroom units and sixteen one-bedroom units. Sanitary sewage is proposed to be connected, uh, into the Bridgeport system via Park Avenue. The applicant, uh, during the hearing has also agreed to extend the concrete curb and sidewalk along Park Avenue, not only across this frontage, but to connect to the sidewalk in front of Sacred Heart University. So there'll be no gap in sidewalk, excuse me, from this site to Jefferson Street. Pardon me. Existing background traffic on Park Avenue is twelve hundred vehicles in the morning peak and eight hundred vehicles in PM peak. The expected traffic generation would add forty-three morning peak trips and fifty-three afternoon peak trips. Um, opposition to this proposal centered around two main, uh, topic areas. One was the design of the stormwater system and the impact, uh, on the historic character of the Merritt Parkway. Engineers for both the applicant and the Merritt Parkway Conservancy offered conflicting testimony regarding the uh, efficacy of the proposed drainage system. And the applicant has received, uh, the applicant has received an inland wetlands approval for the proposal. And the town engineering department has reported that the design is acceptable in their opinion. Attorney Green on behalf of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy offered a brief, uh, outlining, uh, the fact that historic resources are a legitimate public interest over which this commission has jurisdiction. The Conservancy pointed out that they had no objection to the prior application, uh, for an eighty-unit proposal at four stories. And, and they argue that this current proposal of six stories at over eighty feet would be detrimental, um, to the historic resources of the Merritt Parkway. The building would be highly visible from the Parkway and exceed a height of the adjacent tree canopy. And the Conservancy suggested a mitigation strategy to lessen the impact on those historic resources should this, uh, commission approve this application. Their recommendation includes, one, reducing the building height by two stories. Two, modifying the proposed exterior color scheme to be more compatible with the landscape. And two, or I'm sorry, and three, offering a more robust, uh, planting plan adjacent or perhaps within the Merritt Parkway right of way. And the applicant argued on rebuttal, uh, in their view that the unique topography of the site and adjacent Parkway would make the building difficult to see from the road and that the potential harm to historic resources does out, does not outweigh the need for affordable housing. As you well know, uh, having, uh, decided on several, uh, eight dash thirty G applications in the recent past, this, the standards for review of affordable housing application differ from that of a typical zoning application. Where denial of an affordable housing application to be sustained, the burden is on the commission to prove based on evidence in the record that the decision from which an appeal may be taken, uh, is supported by sufficient evidence in the record. In that, uh, the commission has the burden to prove that A, the decision is necessary to protect substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters over which the commission, uh, has jurisdiction. B, such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing. And C, such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the proposed development. That's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Went, uh, for the, uh, for the summary. Um, so with that, uh, I would, um, ask if, uh, just have, um, a motion on this item. Commissioner Noonan?
I would move to approve with, uh, conditions that I, I'll go through now. That the, uh, building, uh, be, uh, reduced by two stories, livable space, four stories only. That the exterior color scheme be consistent with the landscape nearby, that there be adequate planting, um, allow, to, uh, further protect, uh, or further screen from the Merritt Parkway. Uh, and the last condition would be, uh, to do any other testing or additional investigation to finalize the drainage plan before construction begins.
Okay, excellent. And all of that is to, uh, to, to, uh, protect the historic resources as outlined by the Merritt Conservancy?
Yes, obviously the first three cut mirror their recommendation. The fourth is additional.
Right, very, very good. Okay, uh, can I have a second to that motion? Okay, Commissioner Francis? Very well, excellent. Commissioner Noonan, um, you care to start?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think it goes without saying, or maybe it does, uh, but the record shows that the Merritt Parkway is a historic resource. Um, I don't think it's really been disputed about that in the record. Uh, the question is whether the need for affordable housing rose above this historic resource or the integrity to it. Um, historic, protecting historic resources and historic, uh, the integrity of historic, uh, areas or districts is a consideration to determine, uh, in determining whether approved in eight thirty G. We've seen this in the past. I believe the evidence in the record that the building, the only four stories is appropriate to protect the historic resource of the Merritt Parkway. I think in fact the Merritt Parkway Conservancy essentially is ce, conceded that point. Uh, as this commissioner will recall, we had an application, uh, previously from this applicant for this area for a four-story building and they did not object to it. And on questioning mine or the chairman's, I forget whose, the essential testimony was, they did a cost benefit analysis and believed it was not worth objecting at that time. Um, so based on that and their testimony that the six stories would impair or unreasonably impair the Merritt Parkway, Merritt Parkway, um, and its, uh, historic integrity. The four stories, in my view, is a reasonable change, uh, in this in- instance. Um, the obvi, the other conditions of approval, the exterior color scheme and the extra planting will also serve to better either screen as the planting will do the building or at least make it hot less, so to speak, uh, as drivers go down the Merritt Parkway, not seeing, uh, the obvi, an obvious red, uh, and how that contrasts with the area around it. The extra two, again, the screening and the color scheme, I believe it needed to offset the, any potential impact to the historic, um, integrity of the Merritt Parkway. Um, as far as historic, uh, six stories go, I do believe it'd be visible from the Merritt Parkway, both over the tree line, through the trees and regardless, particularly considering the color scheme, but even if it was six stories with it being a similar color scheme as the area, I still believe it would be too overpowering and too detrimental to the integrity of the historic district of the Merritt Parkway. Uh, notwithstanding the fact that obviously the trees did not look to be all evergreen. So even if there was an issue about being able to see it during the summertime, that would go out the window, I think, during the winter, uh, time when the trees, the leaves are down. But again, the winter, as I said, the leaves being, um, uh, going down in the winter and not so, uh, determinative of my fa, uh, in my opinion, I believe of six stories is a massive building that would be viewed on the Merritt Parkway. Um, and that needs to be cut back. This decision, I believe, is necessary to protect the public interest in protecting the historic integrity of the Merritt Parkway. I believe the conditions are reasonable, changed to avoid irreparable, unreasonable and unnecessary harm to the Merritt Parkway. Um, Fairfield has proven a commitment to affordable housing. I think the record, you know, our public, the public information, the pub, in the, the information in the public domain is clear with our recent approvals. And we are moving, moving very well towards, uh, increasing our affordable housing stock. Not just in this air arena, but we have Affordable Housing Trust, uh, with sufficient monies to, uh, buy, to buy or convert to affordable affordable housing. Um, and also we'd be probably farther along as far as our count of the law did not arbitrarily exclude our affordable housing units constructed before nineteen ninety. Um, as for the fourth condition of approval, my notes show, I believe the applicant's engineer had said that additional testing or investigation was needed in order to finalize the drainage plans. I believe that was one main contention between the experts. Um, it strikes me as not just common sense and reasonable, but just practical that if there's additional testing to be done, that it should be done before construction begins and that the drainage plant can be finalized to the best, to the best, uh, as can be possible in these circumstances. Uh, before instruction begins, I believe that was one of the, uh, for the Merritt Parkway's, Park, Parkway's experts saying doing this on the fly was not a good idea. Um, I believe the, any additional testing that's needed in the rec, in the, in the regular course or in the normal course, uh, should be done beforehand. Uh, and the drainage plan finalized and submitted and approved by our town, uh, representatives. To the extent that's already been done to our town representatives, uh, satisfaction, then it becomes essentially a null. Uh, a moot point, but I don't believe that's the case at this point. That's why I would include that fourth condition of approval.
Excellent. Very well. Thank you for your, your comments and, uh, well thought out, um, explanation. Commissioner Francis, you're second on that? Uh, you're on mute.
Yes, very strong statement. Thank you, Commissioner Noonan. I have one condition I would like to propose and see what people think about. Um, I would like the developer to install strong soundproofing materials throughout the structure to block Parkway noise and tenant sounds from each other. The developer anticipates that residents will be mainly medical professionals and municipal employees or that type of person, but some may be college students. And I don't want uh, any of those tenants to interfere with the others, which he is expecting. And there are levels of soundproofing from windows to insulation to the construction materials they can use. So I would like to encourage him to use the strongest ones that he can.
Okay, um, so, uh, a- anything further, Commissioner Francis?
No, I mean, I have a lot to say about, or I could say a lot about, you know, not complying with our plan of conservation, the open space that's supposed to be for the Stratfield area and low density housing. But I think Commissioner's statement was very strong. I know we're all reluctant. I think we are all reluctant to have such a massive structure in Fairfield on Merritt Parkway, but if we impose too many conditions, judges will favorably, should this be appealed, so we have to accept reality.
Okay, so, um, that, then, uh, that would be, uh, in the nature of, of a friendly amendment, um, from Commissioner Noonan's motion. But let, let's, uh, try and get some other feedback and comments and dialogue here among the commissioners before we start refining the, uh, motion. Uh, Commissioner Corcoran? Commissioner Corcoran, we're, we're waiting for you. What, you, you, can, can you try to speak? No, I can't hear you. Uh. You're on mute. You, so, um, okay, so Mr. Went, can you control his mute?
I've got it now.
Very good.
So, um, I, I think that, uh, one of, uh, Commissioner Noonan's conditions is regarding the planting. And I think our conditions should be more, um, specific. I'm not, I haven't thought through how that we should do that. But I think there should be a plan that we are asking the developer to follow, rather than simply asking him to put in more landscaping.
Okay, in, 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 um, the nature of, um, you know, sufficiently screened, fully screened from view of the, uh, of the Merritt Parkway, um, is, is that?
Maybe, maybe we should ask him to submit a plan.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman Jim Went, I, I think it would be appropriate that, uh, given the the modifications that are put forward in this motion, that it would be prefaced by revised plans to be submitted for the commission's review indicating the following, and then follow with the specific conditions as outlined by Commissioner Noonan.
Okay, but it, there, there needs to be some, uh, sort of, um, uh, target for the revised landscaping. And so I think it would behoove us to articulate, I agree with you, Mr. Went, but I think it would behoove us to articulate to uh, the, um, the applicant here, some measure, uh, you know, by which we would, uh, you know, judge the revised plan. Is it that we think, uh, revised landscaping sufficient to screen the building uh, from, from the, um, uh, the, the historic district of the Parkway is, is necessary to preserve the historic resources? Uh, and, and, you know, I mean, and that's, that, that is an identifiable goal. Um, and I think one that would be supported, uh, by the record, um, in the nature of, uh, protecting the historic resources. Um, you know, that, that is the finding. Ultimately, all this needs to be tied back to our finding that the, um, the impact to the historic, uh, uh, district resources, um, which Commissioner Noonan articulated, I think, very well, um, uh, is, is the need to protect that is outweigh, uh, outweighs the need for affordable housing as proposed by the applicant. But sufficiently reducing the building, um, would reduce the impact to the historic district resources uh, to su, to a sufficient level that the, the Conservancy has, uh, conceded, they would not object to, right? So if we're reducing the building, um, and we have sufficient landscaping, are we then, um, you know, achieving that, that goal, uh, of protecting the historic dis- district resources? I think we ought to be thinking about it along, along those, uh, guideposts, if that makes sense. Alright, so, so I have notes here for soundproofing and also to tweak the landscaping. Um. Other commissioners, uh, have questions, comments? Yep, Commissioner Braun?
I would like, is this the last night we have to vote on this? Cause I would still like to hear what happened with the wetlands, um, the wetlands permit. As far as I could tell, there is no wetlands permit because there was a very, um, cut and dried condition of the original wetlands permit, which said any modification would have to go before the wetlands agency. And it did not go before the wetlands agency. It went to the staff, which is not the wetlands agency. So I, I don't think in light of the fact that the excavation, as was testified last, at the last hearing, is twice as long, and I guess the building's around over three hundred feet long. And to make room for more parking, the excavation is deep into the hillside. I don't know, another hundred fifty feet or so. Um, that could have impact on water courses. Um, I feel there's not enough information because of the lack of the wetlands agency reviewing it. The fact that there's significant excavation, and I don't know if, what, if anything would change about that if, if these permit conditions were adopted, I don't know.
Right. So let, let me, uh, speak to that for, um, a moment. I think you raise a, a very good issue. But one which first serves as a basis for our rejection of the current proposal, but ultimately is mooted by our conditions of approval to reduce the size of the building to the earlier application, right? And so one of the things I'm gonna note here is that the, uh, parking should be, uh, similarly reduced, um, uh, because it be consistent with the reduction in the overall size and scope of the building to return it to the prior, um, uh, size and scope that was of the, the earlier application, because that is the size and scope which the, uh, Conservancy did not object to, right? Felt that that was within the limits of, um, the, uh, i- i- it did not impact the, uh, historic, uh, resources of, of the, um, the historic district. Right? So if, if our condition of approval, Commissioner Braun, is to, uh, reduce the size and scope of the building to the earlier filed application, that is exactly the, uh, plan which was, uh, filed before wetlands and was approved, uh, by wetlands. Right? So it, it, it kind of works, uh, in, in, in both aspects. Um, now, I think we also articulate your concern uh, uh, as an additional basis of our condition of approval, right? We are also concerned that the environmental impact would be, um, uh, 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 too great or, you know, it, it has not been vetted sufficiently by our conservation department, to your point. Um, because it didn't go through a second de- application process. Now, I personally am a bit on the fence about whether that is required, uh, and or whether the, um, staff at the conservation department had the authority to do what they did here in, um, essentially finding that the modified plan did, was not substantial enough to, uh, require a new application, right? I mean, that, that's what happened here. Um, based upon the impervious surfaces and, and, and so forth. Um. But, you know, all of that having been said, if our condition of approval is to reduce the size and scope of the project to the earlier filed application, well, then that is the subject matter of an approved plan by conservation. So we kind of So we kind of kill two birds with one stone there, if that if that makes sense to everyone. Mr. Noonan?
Yeah, I just want to point out something that maybe it's a nuance, maybe it's a distinction without a meeting. When I had my initial thought of knowing it's a four stories had not, I I mean, we can talk about this, does this mean that it just reduces the four stories? Or does it reduce the entire scope as the previous application? We got to be careful that our finding, what our decisions, our reasonable changes are based on protecting the historic district of the Merritt Parkway. And if we're we should, if that includes reducing parking, then so then we should outline that a little bit clearer. But if our thought is it's too tall, and that's the reason why we're bringing it down is to protect the Parkway Conservancy, reducing the scope, for example, of parking, may not fit under that rubric. And we may now be going outside of what the whole, kind of what our whole point is, the whole reason for making reasonable, the reasonable changes to accommodate the Merritt Parkway.
Yeah, the historic district, and that's why I framed my comments the way that I did in the sense that if if we collectively viewed the issue that Commissioner Braun is identifying as, as, you know, rising to that level in terms of environmental impact or failure to, you know, go through the 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 regulatory process, although I'm not even sure that we could deny based upon a failure to, you know, get that approval. I think we could make an approval that the conservation commission has to approve, ultimately approve a plan. But, you know, if we thought that hadn't gone through the appropriate channels and process and to do it this way would, you know, irreparably harm the environment, you know, then we could consider saying the other aspects of the plan needed to be reduced to the prior filed application, which was approved by conservation. But I agree with you, I totally agree with you. We we ought to we need to tie any conditions of approval here back to identified protectable interests that that, you know, that we need to identifiable interest that health, safety, and welfare that we can legally consider that we need to protect. Sorry for mincing my my words. I think everybody kind of gets what I'm trying to say.
I agree, I'm not
Which is why I think I might have a problem with the soundproofing.
Yeah, I mean, let me just say this, I'm not comfortable with what the Inland Wetlands staff, and I believe the chair as well. Mr. Went, did you, not just the staff, but the chair of the Inland Wetlands reviewed the staff's decision, is that accurate?
Yeah, let me let me first say that I we're, in my view, perhaps jaded from a staff perspective, wandering into a bit of a dangerous territory here when we get into perhaps second guessing what another agency has opined. But having said that, it is my understanding that prior to rendering the opinion that we received from the conservation staff, that that the staff did review that with the chair of the commission. Now, does that mean that, you know, there wasn't a challenge made to that? There we've had other applications that have been before this commission in which there have been challenges made by staff decisions and appealed. That did not happen here. We have had other eight dash thirty G applications, the High Street proposal by the Housing Authority is is one, is the example where we had a denial of the inland wetlands permit. And it was demonstrated through case law and briefs that that is not doesn't tie the commission's hands to render a different opinion. And in that case, the commission approved the application in the absence of an inland wetlands approval, understanding that the process, the project can't go forward without formally getting that approval. So where I'm going with this is I think I agree with what the chairman has has said, that that if you are clarifying in the conditions that in addition to, you know, just the reduction in two stories, that the scope of the building, and if you recall, the only change that was made from the eighty unit proposal to the hundred and twenty unit proposal was simply adding two stories to the same footprint of the building. That is why the wetlands staff rendered the opinion they did. If the applicant goes in a different direction in modifying the two-story building to change the footprint of the building, for example, you know, that would lead to a different set of circumstances in terms of whether or not that has
And they increase parking?
So I I think that if you can phrase the the condition that the scope of the reduction to be to ameliorate the impact of the, on the historic resources of the Merritt Parkway, include reducing the scope of the building down to the, you know, the the four stories, eighty units, with the site improvements consistent with the plan that was approved by the inland wetlands agency, that's, I think, accomplishing both things.
But there is additional parking that they propose this new versus the old.
It was due to the increase in the number of units from eighty to one hundred. So presuming that the reduction in two stories yields a reduction in unit count, then it would be presumed that they would correspondingly reduce the amount of parking spaces. If you want to articulate that more clearly, that your condition implies that they're going back to that previously approved plan, previously approved by wetlands with eighty units and four stories with the parking that had been previously approved, then, you know, you can make such a finding that the, you know, it's unclear that the
I'm concerned about that because I think the evidence is with respect to the Merritt, harming the Merritt Parkway is not the parking, really not ground level
No, if I can jump in, if I can jump in, it's it's two different things, it's two different things. So the first is the height and the mass of the building impacting the historic district resources that the conservancy is seeking to protect. And the second is protecting the environmental resources, right? So Commissioner Braun's point is that the earlier filed smaller scope application with fewer parking spaces was a plan approved by the conservation department. And the new plan was was found by staff not to be a substantial change from the earlier filed application, and therefore no new application before conservation was required by staff at that agency. Commissioner Braun's point is there was additional parking that was provided in the revised plan, which necessitated additional additional excavation and additional site work that the conservation department didn't didn't consider, right? Because they didn't, they didn't consider a new application.
No, and I, yeah, the parking, I think, would have to go to an environmental concern, not the historic, is my point. And I think we're talking the same way, I just, I want to make that clear. At least as I proposed right now, and I'm happy to listen to others and amend, depending on what the commission wants. You know, that the parking is, I don't think can be attributed to the motion as it stands now, as it only really addresses the historic district.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. It would need to be revised and and and, you know, we'd have to adopt our statements to support that. Commissioner Levy?
Yes, I would, in terms of the reasonable changes to protect the public interest, which we are imposing in order to accommodate the approval of this project, I would limit it to those that specifically relate to the integrity and the preservation of the historic character of the Merritt Parkway. I'd be reluctant to delve into, well, I'm concerned about the environmental issues based on the record. I'd be reluctant to delve into that area. I would focus on the one that we, the public interest that we clearly feel is most important, and that being the visual and the height of the building as it relates to the Merritt Parkway and the concerns that were raised there. So I would I would want to focus just on reducing the height by the two stories, the changes to the facade, you know, to minimize the visual impact and appropriate screening, and leave it at that. As far as parking, it may, I would simply leave it you know, that in all likelihood, the developer may in fact choose to spend less money and have less parking, and that would be his decision, consistent with the earlier application. But I don't feel there's sufficient interest that we should require that he either that he reduce the parking if he chooses to spend the money on it, because I don't see that we have a record to support that environmental concern at this point. So I would just limit it to those areas which I feel are most important, which are reasonable accommodations necessary to preserve the public interest while at the same time approving this project with eighty units and affordable housing in it.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman?
I agree with Commissioner Levy, and just, you know, to to back up, I think we heard very credible expert testimony from the Merritt Parkway Conservancy that the, that's in the record, that the Merritt Parkway is a very valuable historic and architectural resource. It's in the National Register of Historic Places, it's a national scenic byway. The evidence was that its defining feature is this unbroken view shed of trees and greenery, and punctuated by bridges of architectural historic significance. And that the testimony was also that this view shed would be irreparably and forever damaged by a structure of the height and and massing that is proposed of six stories. But that if the structure were shrunk to four stories and the color scheme were made more consistent with the Parkway, and there were additional screen plantings made to further screen the building from the Merritt Parkway, that that would mitigate the damage to this historic resource. I think that the damage that would be done to the historic Merritt Parkway from the plan as proposed clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing, although affordable housing is a significant, a substantial need in Fairfield, and the legislature has spoken on that. Fairfield has made great strides for affordable housing, particularly in the last several years, in terms of applications that we've approved and other steps that we've taken that Commissioner Noonan noted. But we are also required to see whether there are reasonable changes that may be made to the plan that could mitigate or eliminate the harm to the public interest that we're trying to prevent. Here, shrinking the building to four stories is reasonable, is eminently reasonable. The applicant itself proposed a structure of four stories previously. And the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, which is charged with protecting the historic nature of the Parkway, believes that this would adequately mitigate the harm to the public interest. I do hear the concerns about the the wetlands process in particular, and and I believe there was even some discussion at one of the hearings about whether there could be an appeal taken from the action of the inland wetlands agent in in determining that the new plan was only a diminutes change from the prior approved plan. No appeal has been taken, to my knowledge, to our knowledge, there's none in the record. I don't know that it's our place to insert the wetlands, a concern about the wetlands procedure into our decision here. I would also, you know, be in favor of a recommendation, you know, or an unwritten recommendation to the developer about soundproofing or about drainage plan. But I think, as Commissioner Levy expressed and Commissioner Noonan articulated very clearly, the conditions of approval that must be included are a revised plan submitted to us for approval with those first three conditions, reduction of two stories down to the four stories of livable space, and exterior color scheme consistent with the Merritt Parkway, and a planting plan adequate to further screen the building from the Merritt.
Very good, thank you very much. Commissioner Braun?
Just want to point out a couple of things related to affordable housing. Often not brought up is, our numbers go up, but the percentage doesn't necessarily go up. And that sometimes gets lost in the conversation. The percentage can go up because no one's going to put more affordable housing in than they have to to get the eight dash thirty G. That means thirty percent, that means seventy percent will be not affordable. So therefore, your ratio of affordable housing, when you're adding seventy percent not affordable and like thirty percent affordable, the ratio doesn't necessarily go up. In fact, I think it goes down slightly. So when people say we're not doing as well as we should, we are adding absolute numbers of affordable housing, and we have, and we're continuing to do that. I don't think we should be judged by the ratio, unfortunately, the ratio is out there, that's the target. But I don't think we should ever be judged by a ratio not increasing because the statute is set up to make it almost impossible to ever hit that ratio, just by the nature of the seventy thirty split. That's one requirement. My next comment is, I feel strongly that the zoning commission is the protector of our natural resources. The wetlands agency can only protect wetlands and watercourses. The wetlands agency does have a permit, and the permit is very clear that I'm trying to find it here, that permit condition number seven on the original permit for the eighty unit or ninety unit one from a year ago, permit condition number seven is very black letter. It says, "Any change in approved plans must be approved by the inland wetlands agency." I don't believe that would be the staff or informal comments by the chairperson, it would have to go before the agency. So the agency clearly has not reviewed this, it has not shown up on the agenda. I don't believe a notice was published, I don't know how you can appeal a decision that isn't made. You know, just a lady in the office sending an email to someone, I don't know how you appeal that. But that's a procedural thing that the opposition would have to deal with. I don't believe there's a wetlands permit that approves of the new project. As far as if we're scaling this back to exactly match the plans that that were approved in the original wetlands permit, that would mean you would have to say the parking would have to go back to that, everything would have to go back to that, except add the other conditions we want, additional testing for drainage, the screening, you know, the tree planting plan, which of course we would want to review and approve, right? We can't just say do it, we we, that would come back to us, I assume, and the, you know, the facade of the building. Is that what we're proposing, that this plan be modified back to what it was, except for those conditions? That's kind of a question, I guess.
Yeah, and 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 I thank you for that, and I can speak to both of those. So you're correct about the quagmire of the ratio, which is translated into a percentage, which is the statutory means by which eight thirty G applies to a town, ten percent. If a town has less than ten percent according to that ratio you're talking about of affordable housing, then eight thirty G applies. But we're also judged on points for adding those tangible number of units, right? We get a quarter point for certain type of housing, a full point for other types of housing, et cetera. And when we rise to a certain number of points for fully developed and occupied affordable housing that's de-restricted and otherwise complies with eight thirty G, we get qualified to apply for a moratorium, right? Against the developer coming in with an eight thirty G application. So that, to me, is a a huge issue with the, what I'll call the unintended consequences of the eight thirty G statute. Because to your point, Commissioner Braun, eight thirty, the statute itself could be used over and over and over again by developers to continually build these dense affordable housing developments under the auspices of, you know, growing a town's affordable housing to achieve that goal. But to your point on the seventy thirty split, you will never increase the percentage of affordable housing to move up to that ten percent level. affordable housing to move up to that ten percent level. What, what the town will do is accrue points that could achieve a moratorium against application of the, of the, uh, the statute. So, um, you know, for all of the, um, the public officials out there that might read this or the judges that might, you know, uh, take this to the next, next step, you know, you've got to take that into account, um, I think, uh, going forward. But we have to deal with the statute as it exists today, right? And, um, you know, if all of the approved, uh, projects under eight thirty G that, that we've approved would be built and occupied, we would have enough points to qualify for, to apply for a moratorium under eight thirty G. They're just not built yet, all right?
And that's like four years, correct?
Yeah, the moratorium would be for a period of four years. Presumably during that period, the town would continue to make its strides independently of affordable housing towards, uh, you know, additional units, using money that it's collecting in the, in the trust fund to acquire other land and create additional types of affordable units through the, uh, ADUs, uh, and other, um, uh, developments that, that we're encouraging through our regulations. And so we could acquire additional points to achieve, you know, additional moratoriums. But under the statute as it's written today, given where we are, um, I think it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, for us to actually achieve ten percent. And that, that by the way, was, is acknowledged as an arbitrary number the legislature chose to, you know, put upon the, the statute as a, as a, you know, as a benchmark. Um, and so is, is what it is. With respect to your, your second point, Commissioner Braun, um, you know, the, um, the applicant here has to comply with the, um, inland wetlands regulations, right? I mean, they need to, as Mr. Went, um, reminded us about pine tree, you know, it was not appropriate for us to condish, uh, to, to deny the application because they didn't have the approval from inland wetlands, uh, they needed to get that anyway. If they weren't able to get that approval from inland wetlands, then they wouldn't have been able to build a project. Um, now, uh, your point about the, um, the certificate being approved and the regular, what is it, number seven says any changes need to be approved by whatever, well, I, I think that that is for, um, uh, an, a, 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 a ground for appeal by the interested parties, right? Who might seek to, um, halt the, uh, development, the construction of the, of the, of the project on the basis that they, they failed, failed to comply with the inland wetlands agency, um, uh, permit that they were, were given. They're building a different, that the developer then would be buil- building a, a different, um, a project than have been approved by the Conservation Commission, um, as, as a basis for, you know, a, an appeal or, or, or a claim in a lawsuit. Um, I, I don't believe that our charge under the statute and under the law is that we are to evaluate, you know, whether they've got that, that permission, um, uh, you know, that, 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 that approval. Um, so, uh, yeah, I'm certainly happy to hear from other commissioners, but, um, you know, my, my own view is that, um, Commissioner Noonan, uh, Bremen and Levy, uh, have articulated, uh, very well, uh, the appropriate and reasonable conditions of approval that we can impose to protect the historic resources, uh, as articulated by the, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. Um, and then we can add as, uh, sort of, uh, friendly suggestions that they complete their testing, um, use soundproofing, um, and, um, you know, we can remind them that they need to, uh, get, get, uh, you know, uh, uh, wetlands and, or conservation, uh, uh, approval, uh, for their revised plan. And they're going to have to come back to us with a revised plan anyway. Um, so, I mean, I, I think that's where I'll come out on, on all of this. Love to hear what people have to say. Commissioner Noonan?
Uh, um, in light of, I think what everybody's said, I think, um, the proper thing is to amend the motion to keep the three conditions of approval that address the Merritt Parkway, um, integrity issue, take the, the additional testing for drainage and the soundproofing and, um, or at least, certainly those two to be recommendations of approval. Uh, and you, that third for Merritt Parkway, um, inland wetlands, do you think that needs to be a recommendation of approval?
Well, I mean, I think we can remind the applicant that any revised plan would need approval by Conservation Commission, right?
Okay.
Now, I, I, and I, I would also suggest, Commissioner Noonan, if you're fashioning a, an amendment to your motion, that it, that we adopt the, uh, statements of the commissioners as our collective statement in support of the motion.
Okay, that's easy enough. Um, but just, just because I'm not sure I wasn't clear on the inland, uh, the inland wetlands, is it just a reminder or should I be making it a recommendation of approval? Well, not really not a recommendation of approval, it's when you come back, you have to go through inland and wetlands.
If, if their plan is revised, is, if their plan is different, suffi-, you know, then, then in their judgment, they, they, they need to, um, get an approval, then, and that's what they need to do. And if they don't and they try to move forward with the project, Mr. Went, maybe you can chime in here, they don't, they need to move forward the project, it's up to the interveners to, um, you know, seek to, to stop them, I think. Am I off base there?
No, I, I, I agree that I, I, in my opinion, I don't think that needs to be articulated because that approval has to be obtained before a building permit can be issued in any case. So I don't think that that's something that you need to articulate as part of the conditions.
Okay, and the building department is going to look for the approval, um, of the, the inland wetlands agency, uh, of the site plan before they, they issue a permit? That was a question.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to unmute myself. I, I agree, uh, but I also think that, that I agree that the first three conditions that were articulated are relevant to the, uh, mitigating the concerns that, uh, that justify the reduction in the scope of the project. But whether this project be, uh, six stories or four stories as, as conditioned, I think you can separate the initial fourth condition regarding the, uh, additional testing for the drainage system as a reasonable condition for any project going forward regardless of its size. It's not tied to the, you know, mitigating the, um, historic resources of the Merritt Parkway, it's kind of a standalone and in addition, you need to, uh, do this additional testing. So in my opinion, I don't think that's an inappropriate, uh, condition. It's not one that's related to the Merritt Parkway, uh, concerns, but one that I think, um, it can be properly addressed and articulated as a condition.
Because we find that the, um, testing, uh, was insufficient given the size and scope of the project?
Yes, I, I think there's sufficient discussion in the record that supports a finding that, that additional testing be done. It, it would, again, perhaps similar to the wetlands issue would have to happen as a matter of course, but I think to, to articulate it, uh, would clarify that so going forward in future applications, we don't find ourselves in a similar circumstance.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's, um, that makes sense.
I'm obviously fine with keeping my initial motion amending so the, uh, the soundproofing is a rec- a recommendation of approval, uh, so long as the rest of the commission is okay with that fourth, uh, being there, uh, the initial testing based on what Mr. Went just said.
Mm-hmm, okay, and adopting our, um, our collective statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that's important because, um, you know, Commissioner Bremen articulated it explicitly, but I, I, I think it bears noting, you know, we had conflicting expert testimony and I think, uh, you know, I, I, I personally, um, find, uh, the Merritt Conservancy's experts, uh, more credible, um, and, and, um, I credit their testimony over the applicant's, uh, uh, expert testimony, um, you know, in, in rendering this decision. I think it's implicit in everything that we're saying, but I think, you know, Commissioner Bremen touched upon it and I'd like for it to be, um, for, you know, the record, uh, we are collectively crediting the Merritt Conservancy's expert testimony over the evidence that was, uh, you know, brought forward by, by the applicant and, um, you know, are fashioning these conditions, uh, of, of approval in, in order to ameliorate the impact on the historic district, the historic district resources. Um, and so, you know, that's why I think it's important for us to adopt all of our comments as a collective statement. So you agree with that, Commissioner Noonan?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Francis, you were the second on that, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do. There, there was a lot of testimony, if I recall, though, that they had done a, a lot of extra testing beyond what they needed to ground drainage testing, but...
I think that the recommendation is to ensure that there was adequate, that there is adequate testing done, uh, to construct the system before it's constructed, uh, and, and not on the fly as they suggested that they would do.
Yes, yes, there was very, very much two sides to that testimony, yes, there was.
There was, that's right. And, and, and so, you know, I think the point is that, uh, additional testing may reveal that the, uh, that the ground is not capable of, um, being engineered to accommodate, you know, such ru- ru- runoff and, and, and rainfall and, and off the...
In the end, weren't they saying that the state's going to decide? You know, we had...
That they needed, yes.
The applicant expert and the other engineer Trinkus and, and then they, they said how much testing they let Mr. Trinkus's group do, but then the state was going to decide.
Yeah, that's, that's another, another approval that needs to happen, that's right. Yeah, okay.
But yes, in answer to your question, yes, I certainly think that would be excellent.
Very good. So I think where, where we, where we have, where we are now is that we have, uh, a motion by Commissioner Noonan, seconded by Commissioner Francis, to approve the application, uh, with three conditions, lower the height to four stories, uh, change the facade and coloring to be more consistent with the natural topography and landscape, and additional screening to sufficiently screen the building, uh, from the historic district re- resources of the Merritt Parkway, that we recommend that the applicant complete, uh, no, that we also condition approval on the applicant completing the required testing for the drainage engineering before construction and that we recommend the applicant use sufficient soundproofing in the building to accommodate the concerns expressed by, uh, Commissioner Francis. And that we are adopting all of our commissioners' statements and comments as a collective statement in support of, uh, the motion.
That adequately summarizes, I believe, where we are and what the current motion is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Noonan, anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Braun?
I di- I didn't finish what I was saying before. Um, I think in light of the fact that we are the sole protector of the environment through regulation in our town, in addition to the wetlands agency, which can only protect wetlands and watercourses, I think we are entitled to get the information we need to be fully informed, and I don't think we have in this case. Um, I think, um, Commissioner Noonan did a great job putting forth, um, this sort of compromise solution, but I don't feel that I personally am ready because I don't think I've been fully informed. And for one thing, the wetlands permit, we, I'm looking at a letter now by a wet, a soil scientist that the opposition put in that said the wetlands could be affected. Um, I'm, I don't know what's going on underneath the building, they did concede under questioning that there was no subsurface geological testing. This is a highly, um, sl- a very steeply sloped property, there may or may not be blasting and everything that drains from this site goes into Mill River, this is Mill River watershed. There are a couple tributary, tributaries right near this site, there are species of special concern that have been noted in the area, although they didn't do a survey this time. So I would say based on all those things, based on environmental concerns, completely separate and distinct from, uh, the Merritt Parkway concern, I feel that it's incumbent on the applicant to provide us with sufficient information. And I can't believe, I don't believe that the legislature in passing eight dash thirty G would have said, "Ignore environmental concerns unless an applicant, uh, an opposition raises it." I think we should be able to request the information that we feel we need. And that's what I feel that we should do in future applications and I can't, I can't, um, I can't approve something, even a really good compromise that Commissioner Noonan proposed because I don't feel I'm fully informed. That's basically is my statement.
Okay, um, that, that, okay, so the, the letter that you're referring to was in the, uh, earlier filed application before, uh, Conservation Commission?
Actually, I think it's in this one. It's by, um, George Logan, he's a pretty well-known soil scientist, I think it's in this one. Cause I don't think there were, yeah, it's called a Re- Remo Letter, that's the name of his company, his consulting firm. So it kind of goes along with...
Who was the letter submitted to?
Um, Town Plan and Zoning. It was a letter submitted, I think, when the opposition did their presentation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I believe the letter that Commissioner Braun's referring to, it, it, it is in the record and it, I think largely, um, spoke to, there hadn't been, uh, an evaluation of the impacts on adjacent wetlands or plant life, uh, due to the additional two stories of the building because of the additional shade that might in, uh, arise or, or be impacted by the additional height of the building that wasn't evaluated by the inland wetlands commission. But that, again, I think would be mitigated by the reduction in height, two stories were back to the same height that was reviewed by inland wetlands agency, therefore we don't have the additional, um, shading, which I believe was the thrust of that particular letter.
And without, I don't know every single change that the new application had other than height and clearly excavation into the hillside, maybe a hundred fifty feet worth, but that to me is a change and it's, we should have had that information before us. I'm looking at a geographic map, it's very close to two off-site wetlands and it's extremely steeply sloped, um, towards the Merritt Parkway. So I, I feel that more information should be provided by the applicant so we can protect the natural resources of our town. I don't see how we could do it without the information.
Anyone else, any other commissioners have any, uh, comments? I don't see anyone, I don't hear any other voices. Uh, are we ready to vote? Okay, so, uh, uh, a few minutes ago, I, I, I summarized where we were and the Commissioner Noonan, uh, whose motion it was, uh, agreed with my summary. That's the motion on the table with conditions, uh, as I articulated. All those in favor say aye, raise your hand. Aye. Okay, and, uh, any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? So the motion carries, uh, with all commissioners in, uh, favor and Commissioner Braun, uh, opposed. Next item is one hundred, uh, Nepus Road, request of vanilla Volca for one thousand, or one thousand, for one hundred percent, sorry, it's a typo when I did that. One hundred percent release of a nine thousand twenty-two dollar and fifty cent bond pertaining to subdivision improvement in an R three zone. And on this matter, I will, uh, recuse myself from, from this matter and turn it over to Commissioner Bremen to, uh, to lead this.
I, I also must recuse myself as I...
I, I also must recuse myself as I was not here for the, for the meeting.
Commissioner Levy? You're on mute.
I was not here and I couldn't find it on fair to me, so.
All right, very good. So we have Wagner, Bremen, and Levy recusing on one hundred Nepus Road, which means that, and now I'm not seeing on video Commissioner Elliott.
Yeah, I don't see Mr. Elliott. I see him on the, I see him on the list.
You do?
I just don't see him in his video feed. Um, let's see, hang on a second.
And Commissioner Gordon? She's still there.
As we stand now, in Mr. Elliott's absence, we have four members of the commission present that were present at the hearing last time. Commissioners Francis, Braun, Corcoran, and Noonan, which comprise a quorum of four members, so we can proceed.
Do, do we have Commissioner Gordon or Elliott?
Well, Commissioner Gordon was not present at the last meeting. Commissioner Elliott was. I see him on the list, but I don't see his
Yeah.
Media feed. Oh, he's back.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so we have five, we have five members, Mr. Chairman. So in, in March of two thousand seventeen, the commission approved a two-lot subdivision. There was an existing dwelling at one hundred Nepus Road. A new dwelling was constructed on the new lot, which is number seventy. The bond was for drainage and site stabilization. We do have a report in our file from the Engineering Department recommending one hundred percent release. In this hearing was last time, there were no impacted property owners that spoke at that hearing. So we're, we are accordingly recommending the favorable release of the bond.
Okay, thanks. So in light of recusal of Wagner and Bremen, I believe Commissioner Corcoran, you are next up, is that right? Okay, so you're acting, acting chair? Is that?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think you can call the vote and, and call for a motion. You're just not voting yourself as not being present. But I think you can still administer the process.
Okay, all right, right.
You're not recusing yourself, you just were not, you weren't
Fair enough, fair enough. So then, can I have a vote on this item? Commissioner Noonan, motion to approve? Very good. Any comments from either of you? Commissioner Corcoran? You're on mute. Can you repeat that?
Sorry, I think I, in my attempt to unmute him, I think I muted him as he was unmuting himself.
So I don't see any problems with this.
Okay, very good, very good. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Did you get a second from Mr. Corcoran also?
I did, thank you, yes. So the motion to approve is first by Commissioner Noonan and seconded by Commissioner Corcoran. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions? The motion is to approve. Okay, seeing no hands and hearing no one, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye or raise your hands. And all commissioners who are voting, voted in the affirmative. Any objections? And any abstentions? And that would be three, Wagner, Levy, and Bremen. Okay? Complicated procedural evening. All right, next is Compliances Coastal Site Plan Applications. We have two. First is two twenty-three seventeen Black Rock Turnpike zoning compliance application of Phil Serone, architect to establish a food service use in a portion of existing building in the Design Commercial District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this site is in the Fairfield Woods Plaza, the former retail store, which is a part of the old Lennox Jewelers retail space, is proposed to be converted to a food service business selling smoothies. As detailed in the application, there are three hundred and twenty square feet of patron floor proposed within the gross area of thirteen hundred and fifty square feet. And with the utilization of one additional parking space that's presently in excess that's available on this site, this proposal's in compliance with the parking standards and otherwise complies with the regulations.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Noonan? Motion to Thank you. And Commissioner Corcoran with a second, thank you. Commissioner Noonan, Commissioner Corcoran, any comments on this?
Nothing to add from me.
Very good.
It complies, nothing more.
Very good, I agree. I don't see any basis for denial here. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion to approve is, is approved unanimously. Next is two fifty-five Old Dam Road Coastal Site Plan Application of Mike O'Neill and Ashley Neil Gray pertaining to the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this proposal entails the demolition of an existing single-family dwelling and the construction of a new FEMA-compliant single-family dwelling. This proposal is consistent with the Beach District design standards. The proposal is also consistent with the relevant coastal management policies. However, we do have two recommended conditions should the commission find, the commission move to approve this application. In your packet and in the feedback we got from the Connecticut DEEP, they didn't raise any coastal resource issues, but they did raise the, the point that a predecessor owner of this property was cited for a violation in related to past dock repairs where there was some minor filling of tidal wetlands. And it is our recommendation that that violation be resolved prior to the issuance of a building permit for this proposed dwelling. Secondly, the architectural plans, while compliant with the Beach District regulations and the elevation criteria of the flood zone that it's in, require some additional details because this site is in a fairly unique area, what's called on the FEMA maps, the area of limits of moderate wave action, which require a little bit different design standard than what's shown on this plan. The elevation plans are fine, the footprint is fine, there's just some columns. We, we have a specific limit to how wide the columns can be and some other minor details that would need to be reflected in the architectural plans, again, before a building permit is issued. But overall, we think this is consistent with coastal resource policies in the Beach District regs. And with those two recommended conditions, we would recommend its approval.
Very good. Thank you for the comments and the recommended conditions. Have a motion?
I have to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis. Do you do so with the recommended conditions as articulated by Mr. Went?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Noonan. Thanks. Commissioner Francis, any comments?
No, I looked at the site. It's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Noonan?
Nothing extra, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I reviewed the file and I didn't identify the second, but I think otherwise it complies. Commissioner Corcoran?
I was just Googling the address and it's, at least on the Google Maps, it's not the property we're talking about. I'm wondering if the address is, is correct.
I don't know what Google Maps shows. I know there's sometimes a conflict with Old Dam Road. Some Old Dam Road addresses show up in our tax assessors database under Pine Creek Avenue for some reason. So I'm not sure how Google
Yeah.
Maps is reflecting the, the address.
The demo drawers, it was a little different number than was in our agenda. But it had to be the site because it was a lower number on one side and a higher on the other.
You've, you physically visited the, the site. Commissioner Francis, yes?
There's a big demo, but it did have a slightly different, is it five thirty-nine or something? The agenda says five forty-one, but it had to be because of the numbers on each side. Small, narrow lot, no room for mistaking it.
Yeah, I mean, I would note also that the the, the dock repairs that Mr. Went you were referencing identified two five one Old Dam Road, not two five five.
Yeah, I'm looking at that too. It's possible that they may be displaying a different number, but there are tax assessment data saying it's two five five as the the application that the applicant filled out represents two five five. So it's possible there may be a different number on the mailbox than what we're identifying it. But I don't, you know, it's I think we are talking, it's Tax Assessors Map two thirty-four parcel two seventeen, whether, so I don't I'm not sure why there's a discrepancy in the numbers.
So if you look at the application to us, the first page, the address is identified as two five five Old Dam Road. The map is two thirty-four parcel two eleven.
Aye.
When did you put the meeting?
It'll be done in a quarter hour.
Thanks. If you're not speaking, members of the public, please mute, mute your lines. And I do see that the owner's address is two ninety-five Old Dam Road, so that, you know, the owner of the building lives a couple houses down.
Correct.
But the map and parcel that you just mentioned, I think is is it the same or different from the one on, on cover the application?
Now you're asking a hard question, so.
Because, you know, all the data and all of the review of the site, the site plans, like, you know, all of that makes sense. But we're not identifying the property properly. That, I think, is, is a problem that needs to be resolved.
Well, the survey is identifying as two fifty, two fifty-five Old Dam Road, Assessors Map two thirty-four parcel two eleven, which is consistent with the application and is consistent with the assessor data. If you look at the aerial, there's an inset to the aerial, I'm sorry, on the the staff coastal site plan report, it says two fifty-five Old Dam Road. And that appears to have map two thirty-four parcel two seventeen. So there may be a discrepancy on how that is being identified, but I don't think there's any discrepancies to which parcel we're, which property we're referring to, but we will clear that up for the notice of record.
Is there any any question about the the violation from two thousand nine?
I don't believe so. We shared that with the applicant and made them aware that that was going to be our recommended condition, and I haven't
And they didn't object to that?
I haven't heard. I mean, it would be, if the DEEP has identified the, the wrong parcel, it would be an easy fix for them. But I don't believe there's any ambiguity as to which address we're speaking to, at least to this coastal site plan application.
Yes. No, I, I, I think that's right. I just reviewed all the documents again while we're talking. And I think that particularly given the site plan and the analysis coastal site plan application and P U review, et cetera, I don't think there's, there's, there's any ambiguity about which parcel we're talking. Does anyone else feel differently? Commissioner Corcoran?
I think we're okay. We just had difficulty hearing you for a brief moment there, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I said, I, I, did you hear me say that I took a look at all the, all the documents again while we were just talking? I don't think that there's any discrepancy that we're identifying and talking about a specific parcel. I don't think that is ambiguous. Commissioner Braun?
I think it might be two fifty-one because if you look on page sixteen of the plans or O, O List Office of Long Island Sound Programs, they're identifying it as two fifty-one. And if you look at the aerial I'm looking at, it looks like it's between two forty-something and two sixty-something. And on the aerial, it says two fifty-one. So I'm wondering if this could be two fifty-one. If you go to sixteen of the plans we got.
So, so, so what you're, the document you're referring to is from two thousand nine?
Yeah. Sorry, yeah.
And I think the
Notice of violation, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right.
We'll certainly confirm the address as it relates to the DEEP issue of whether or not that applies to this site or not. But this site lies between, as Commissioner Braun just said, two forty-nine and two sixty. Again, the tax assessor is identifying it as two fifty-five. It's possible that the owners may identify it differently as two fifty-one. It's not, I shouldn't say it's uncommon, but it's from time to time within the address ranges that we have, that folks sometimes put a different number on their mailbox than what the tax assessor might have within a couple of digits. But we will, we will clear that up with respect to the, the title wetlands issue as raised by DEEP. But with respect to the construction in chief, I think we've got the right property.
Yeah, I think that's what the big orange sign says. It's big plywood all over the front of the house. It said demo two fifty-one.
So, so should we, should we put a condition of approval here that the that the property number, the, the, the address be harmonized or?
I, I don't think that's necessary. I think, I think we're dealing with two fifty-five, also perhaps known as two fifty-one. So I think they're one in the same parcel, but we will confirm that. And the only possibility beyond us misidentifying this site because the plans all are consistent is whether or not the DEEP violation may pertain to a different site. But my, I don't believe that's the case.
Right, okay. All right, the motion on the table is to approve. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion to approve is, is approved unanimously.
Before, if the chairman, before we move on to
You're, you're a little shaky there. You need to mute people. If you're not speaking, please mute. And go ahead, Mr. Went.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Before we move on to the public hearing, just as a matter of housekeeping, I know some folks were away. I just wanted to update the commission. We did ask for your possible attendance at a planning discussion to be held. And it looks like we do have all the full, all the regular members are available on the evening of Wednesday, the eighth of September. I just wanted to put that out there and reconfirm that. From the responses that I got, both by email and by phone, it seems like all seven regular members are available on Wednesday, September the eighth. So I just wanted to confirm that. And, and I will follow that up with an email, but if that is not the case, please let me know now. But otherwise, I will be following up in the days to come, firming that up with some materials that we will be discussing that evening.
Okay, we targeting six thirty PM again?
That would be my intention unless you feel otherwise, but yeah, to keep it consistent, that would be my point.
Yep, very good. All right, six thirty, Wednesday, September eighth?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. So next item is our, our public hearing. We have two items. Members of the public are here for you're not. Thank you. For those members of the public that have come to participate, we will first have the applicant present their application. I will then call for public comments. You can indicate that you'd like to speak by signing up in the chat. And we'll call people in the order that they've signed up, so we have a bit of a queue. You don't have to sign up, and I'll be sure to call again for members of the public to jump in and in an orderly fashion to speak if they'd like. Once all members of the public have finished, we'll go back to the applicant who will provide their rebuttal. And once the applicant is done with their rebuttal, I'll close the public hearing on that item and then move on to the, to the next one. Okay? Feel free to sign up in the chat for either of the items. First is seventy three Thorpe Street, actual permit application of Betty Pigliotti Green pertaining to the construction of a two-family dwelling in the Center Design District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
All right, well, good, good evening to everyone. For the record, I'm John Fallon. I'm an attorney here in Fairfield, and I am pleased to be representing the applicant and owner of the property, Betty Green, who's in the meeting. Also with me in the meeting tonight is Mr. William Levy, our architect, and Mr. Jimmy Zuno, Zumo, our site engineer from Land Surveying Services. So should you have any questions with regard to the architectural plan or the site plan, you can certainly avail yourself of their presence. The application is pretty straightforward. The property is located at seventy three Thorpe Street. It's located in the Center Design Business District. When Ms. Green bought this property, the first thing she did in considering her options as far as development was to reach out to the neighbors, to talk about the various scenarios that presented themselves. And what grew out of that was a clear feeling, I think, on everyone's part, that this particular parcel, based upon its location and the substantially residential character of this portion of Thorpe Street, would be better served by the development of a two units of residential housing, which is what you have in front of you tonight, rather than a mixed-use proposal under section twelve point three point sixteen. Obviously, a mixed-use proposal would require that the first floor be utilized for a retail or office purpose. And it was just felt that in this primarily residential area, that kind of first-floor use of the property would not be desirable for the neighborhood or its residences. That's particularly true when you look at the residential character of the street and you consider how a commercial entity would have to access that first floor. So we just felt it would be out of place, and I think the neighbors agreed with that. So we committed ourselves to residential use of the property. We did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, who unanimously on July one, two thousand and twenty one, approved some variances. They approved a variance of section twelve point three point sixteen to allow residential use of the structure to exceed fifty percent. Obviously, in this case, it's a hundred percent. And to allow residential use on the ground floor, which is what we are proposing. They also granted a variance of section twelve point seven point six point two to allow a, a, a small variance of the side property line. The purpose of that was so we could center the new residential building on the site and make it more aesthetically pleasing and functional. I would want to point out that all the other provisions of the zoning regulations are being complied with here. In fact, lot coverage will be forty four point five percent, although the zone allows a lot coverage of up to ninety percent. And similarly, the maximum floor area will be eighty point three percent, although the zone, as I said, also allows up to two hundred percent. So it's, it's a very attractively designed, we believe, structure. It's two units of residential housing, very much in character with the, the quality and, and the, the character of the neighborhood. I did submit through your staff, through Mr. Went today, we did before going to ZBA canvass the neighborhood, and I submitted at that time to the ZBA petitions assigned by many, many residents of Thorpe Street endorsing this application. I've resubmitted those to you tonight so that you can see confirmation that we have reviewed this carefully with our neighbors and, and, and we just feel personally, and I believe they feel as well as the petition indicates, that what we propose here as, as a residential building with two units of housing is just much more compatible with the residential nature of this portion of Thorpe Street. So that's really what the application is. It's been approved unanimously by the Zoning Board of Appeals. We've carefully vetted it over the last few months with our neighbors. I think Bill Levy has done a wonderful job. It's an attractive, understated building, two stories, as I said before. The coverage and the FAR are substantially less than the zone would allow. And we hope that along with the ZBA did, you will see fit to approve this application. And we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks very much. Any members of the commission have any questions for Attorney Fallon? Commissioner Corcoran?
This lot is right next to some commercial uses, right?
There is some commercial use, yes, nearby.
And across the street. It's immediately next door and across the street, isn't it?
There is commercial use in, in the neighborhood, but there's also substantial residential, as you know. And as I said, we talked, we, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Corcoran, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, and, and, you know, I, we early on went to the residence, you know, commercial residential in, on Thorpe Street, discussed the options for development, and, and there was a strong consensus, which we share, that in this particular case, for this particular structure, this particular property, the residential use was, was substantially preferable to trying to do some form of commercial office retail use on the first floor.
Right. And if I, if I may, but you got a variance for that?
We did.
So the application comprising a one hundred percent residential use is now consistent with our regulations as in accordance with the variance that you've been granted, correct?
Correct. We wrapped the variance unanimously on July one.
Right, and that was obtained with the support of the neighbors as adjoining landowners and in the community, right, who supported the application for the variance?
That's correct, to the best of our knowledge, and that's why I submitted the, the petition forms that were submitted to the ZBA.
Yeah. What was there? And, and I mean, in, in, in some ways, it might even be irrelevant, given that the variance is granted, but was there opposition to the application for the variance?
There was an earlier application that was made where we were seeking three units of housing. And although we had substantial support from the neighbors at that time, there were members of the neighborhood who felt that that was just too dense. It was, it was, it was too much in terms of bulk on the property and, and, and that they, they were not, they would be more comfortable with, with something less, and so we came back. Actually, that, that vote, we, we, we had three votes in favor of granting the variance and two opposed. And as you know, under the statute, you need four out of five. So we didn't appeal that. We went back, we talked to the neighbors, we, we kind of reconvened, and then we came back with this application that's before you tonight to the ZBA in July, July one, and it was unanimously approved. And I do not recollect that there was any opposition at that time.
To that, to the, to the second application?
To the, to the two-unit proposal, which is what's before you tonight.
Right. Okay. And, all right, Commissioner Corcoran, anything else? Commissioner Braun?
I just want to say that I support this. It's a duplex. We need duplexes. This is the right location. It looks as though the neighbors appreciate it, and I remember Attorney Fallon fifteen years ago, when there was a proposal to expand the divorce parking lot. That was on this lot, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah, I think you're right. You have a, you have a better memory, Commissioner Braun, than I do, but I think you're correct.
I might have been in that opposition, but I, that's a long time ago. So I support this, the neighbor's support. I think it's a, a great, a great way of adding some middle housing to the property of our town.
Thank you. I think those, those comments are better reserved for our executive session. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you, commissioners, very much for your time.
All right, so let's throw this open to a, a public comment. Commissioner, Mr. Went, do we have any members of the public who signed up to speak on this one?
I do not see anybody signed up in the chat, Mr. Chairman, but if there's anybody, you know, you know, as you, I'll let you make a general call. I do not see anybody who've identified themselves in the chat.
All right, very good. And any members of the public wish to be heard on this application? I can see certain number of video screens, but not all, so, you know, if you want to be heard, please just chime in, raise your voice. I'm not hearing any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this one? Going once, going twice? Three times. Very good. Attorney Fallon, you have no public comment, so we will close the public hearing on this item.
Thank you.
And we'll call the final item, eight eighty eight, eight ninety eight Old Field Road, a zoning compliance and coastal site plan application of APB Old Field LLC pertaining to a thirteen-unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statute and the Residence B Zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm John Fallon. I represent the applicant on this matter. And, and I, and I have an update, which I shared with staff, which I'm pleased to present to the commission. So I'll do so briefly. This is an application that has, or a project that has been under conception for a substantial period of time. The original iteration of this was a nineteen-unit development on this particular piece of property. In working with the town engineering department and other town officials, we reduced the scope of that project to what is before you tonight, and that is a thirteen-unit development comprised of thirteen two-bedroom units brought pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G. I believe Mr. Green, my colleague Joel Green, is in the meeting. He and I have dialogued on this. Attorney Green represents a substantial number of neighbors in the Old Field Road area, to my count sixteen. And over the last few days, we work collaboratively, and I want to say very productively. And we've come up with a plan that its concepts that we wanted to at least share with you tonight, without making a full presentation, is that we've agreed to reduce the number of units further from thirteen to ten. We've agreed to take advantage in that reduction of density by way of moving the structure farther away from the street line on Old Field Road. In fact, by our measurement, it will be some forty-seven feet off of Old Field Road. So that we'll be basically lining the, the new construction up with the, the buildings on either side of us. And the third element of our agreement is that we are going to take advantage of that additional frontage, if you will, to enhance our landscaping plan to provide additional screening. So what we propose to do, what I discussed with staff, and I think Mr. Green and I are asking you to do, is to continue this matter to your meeting on September fourteenth. We've committed to Mr. Went and Mr. Green that we will be submitting the revised plans, consistent with what I just articulated by at least a week from today. So we'll get those plans filed. We'll get them to Mr. Green, so he and his clients can review them. But we're very happy. We, we, we're trying to work with the neighbors. The neighbors are trying to work with us. We appreciate that very much. And I think out of that can come a, 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 a better application and an application that we can present to you on the fourteenth with some consensus, we believe, in the neighborhood with regard to the proposal. So that's, that's what I would have for tonight, and I would hope you could continue the fourteenth, and we'll submit the revised plans, and Mr. Green is probably here somewhere, and he may want to speak.
Well, thank you for, for, for that. If, if the plan that's being submitted is being so substantially revised, why, I, I don't understand holding the hearing open. Why, why wouldn't you just file the revised plan and mark it up as a, as a new application, or, you know, just get on the agenda for, for a hearing? Why would we be opening a hearing on a, on a site plan that you're not going to carry forward?
Well, the application, first of all, I don't think, I think the changes are important, but I don't think they're substantial. Where we, the essence of the agreement basically is that we're going to be reducing the number of units from thirteen to ten. That's the real linchpin. We've waited some months. Obviously, your schedule is busy. Your volunteer time has been busy. You've had a number of very busy applications. We probably filed this application, Mr. Went can tell me if I'm wrong, but probably sometime back in June. So to answer your question, I, I think that having an applicant who's waited since June, Mr. Chairman, and who is working collaboratively with the neighbors, lit, seeking to build consensus in the neighborhood, and with a, and it's not going to, the, the architectural plans are not going to change in terms of the exterior design. We're just going to eliminate three units, and we want to lay that out. So to answer your question, I think it's fair and reasonable and, 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 and something that's worthwhile with this, with this, when you have an applicant who's working with the neighborhood. And this has just come together over the last few days. I don't think it's unreasonable or unusual to say, hey, we'd like to have this matter continued so that we can, you know, give you some documentation of the agreement we've reached with a substantial number of neighbors and then file the application or re, file the revised plans, which will not be substantially different, but will be important, and then have the hearing on the fourteenth. So that's, that's my answer. We, we've had this application pending for some time. My contact with Mr. Green, as I'm sure he will confirm, only arose within the last three or four or five days. My client's reaction to that is that let's work with the neighbors, and I, I would hate to see him have to, because he's working collaboratively with the neighbors, have to start all over, go to the end of the line, and, and, and I don't think that's necessary. I think we have a good, we have a good plan now. We can conclude our business before you on the fourteenth, and we'll all be well-served with that.
Okay, so, so you also implicate our own statutory deadlines within which we have to complete the hearing and render the decision, you know, by, right from the time that the application is filed and so forth?
I've told Mr. Went, any, 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 any extensions or statutory extensions as provided for under the statute, we'll certainly provide.
Okay, so you, you, you will consent to any extensions that the commission might, might need to, to complete its work?
Yes, we will.
Okay. All right, well, based upon those representations, I mean, unless, you know, any, any commissioner has an objection, you know, applicants asked to continue the hearing to our next, next meeting date, and also indicated they're going to consent to any extensions that we might ask for, for the commission to, to do it, to complete its work. I don't see any reason why we, we wouldn't, you know, keep the hearing open and continue it. Any other members of the commission feel differently? Okay. All right, very good. So, you know, Mr. Went, unless you have any other comments or questions, I, I think we just will adjourn this hearing?
Yeah, I think that's fine unless there's something that, that Attorney Green, on behalf of the neighbors, feels differently about, but I, I'm inclined to agree with you.
Attorney Green, do you have any objection to anything that Attorney Fallon has said tonight?
For the record, Joel Green of the Law Offices of Green and Gross, no, I, I thank Mr. Fallon, I thank the applicant for, and on behalf of my clients, I thank Mr. Braun and the applicant for their cooperation, and we have been working collaboratively, and we join, we join in the request for the continuance of the public hearing.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
And with that, then I will continue the public hearing on, on this item until the next time, and I will adjourn our meeting as there's no further business.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Attorney Green. Thank you, members of the commission. Have a good evening.
Good evening. Take care.